Berlin School Committee to Order.
Okay, so we'll start with the consent agenda on the policies. You had received copies of the originals and the, I believe yours, I hope it showed up in red, did it? Of where the changes were on the current policies. I can either go through each one individually with you to let you know what the policy subcommittee worked on, or we can do a consent to approve them. But I will just say that your background checks, the ADDA is all based on the new laws and regulations. So that was quite, that was the most significant changes. So, anybody want to get into a motion?
So here a motion for the consent agenda to approve all five policies.
It's removed.
And this for the region?
For the region. Is there a second? The region?
Second. Any further discussion?
Any discussion on these policies? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Opposed, none, it passes the region.
Okay, now for Boylston. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, for the Berlin School Committee, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So what I'd like to do is step out of order here and do the presentation on regionalization, the next steps. We're lucky enough to have Dr. Steve Hemmings with here today, so I'm going to open it for him. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. This is my second time I've been here. First of all, I just like to make sure, I'm Stephen Hemmings, Executive Director for the Regional School Association, and I'm a former school superintendent, I was at Narragansett for eight years, then retired in 2008. And I've been doing that, doing this since then, and enjoying it very much. And one of the things that we have tried to develop that has been a real lack of is a process of regionalization of different activities that regions need to undertake. And one of them is the expansion of a region, in your particular case, is a secondary region to elementary region. But before we do that, could I just go around and know who everybody is and what district you're from? You are?
The Recording Secretary.
Okay. Here's your picture, Jamie.
I'm Angela Yildiz.
We've met before.
Yes, we have.
Yep.
Lori Martesca, Boylston.
Tom Fleming, Berlin.
Susan Flanagan, Berlin.
Larry.
Brad White, Boylston.
Yep.
Superintendent?
Yes.
Human Personnel.
And Coach Carroll. What I, what tonight has been asked to give you is a process by which you can expand your region from a secondary region to a pre-K and 12 region. This is a recommendation we put together and we've worked with other regional school districts in doing this. So first of all, I want to give you a little bit of an overview. You make a decision, update the agreement, it's been voted that you want to proceed in that direction. You form a regional amendment committee, as you do, we call it R.A.C., Regional Amendment Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, because you're amending your agreement that you have. Utilize consultants for the process, in order to have consultants come in, you have to follow Chapter 30b process. One of the things you start off is review your current regional agreement for sections to amend, where are the areas that you're going to amend because you want to expand. You have to make sure you incorporate those state laws and regulations that are in there. It's defined in the laws and regulations, have to be in your agreement. Development Implementing Community Relations Plan, this is what's very important, is that you go out and you, a process by which the community is involved during the whole process that you might, I might, stay out of the camera way, that you might want to expand the region. Review and suggest amendments to the current agreement, you produce an amended agreement, approve amended agreement by the school committee, seek preliminary approval from the Commission of Education. All regional agreements, amendments are new, whatever have to be approved by the Commissioner. Then you vote the amended agreement in each town meeting, and then final approval is granted by the Commission. So that's just a quick overview, we're going to go into some detail now. So you form an amendment subcommittee. One of the, to give some recommendations, there is no law that says you have to do it this way, only if you choose to. So you report the regional amendment committee, and it's subject to the open meeting law. We suggest membership, one school committee member from each town, or you could have two. The problem is you have, you have only three members from each town, if we have a quorum and you think it's a subcommittee, so you have one. However, anybody can attend the meeting, so they just don't have a vote. Selectmen from each town, one from each town, finance commissioner from each town, town administrator, town manager from each town, public at large, two to three, how many you want at large, ask them to come on. Then the school superintendent, business manager would act as a resource when you need information. So this is what you want to set up, and it's a cross-section of not only the elected official, but also the townspeople. Because what happens is you need to go back, you want this committee to come up with an amendment that they will go back and support in their individual towns. Now, what we suggest, the school committee select one member from Berlin, one from Boylston, and they also then assign the business manager and the superintendent as a resource. School committee would ask selectmen from each town to recommend a member to be appointed, also they request to the town administrator to be appointed for each town, and the finance commission. We've asked, we recommend you ask them and let them recommend to you, and then you appoint them to the committee. You want them involved in that process. School committee would request individuals from both communities, two or three members from Berlin, two or three members from Boylston. The school committee appoints, want a chairperson, vice chair, and a secretary. Your central office would be involved in providing services, hosting the meetings and so forth. You'd also need somebody, whether it's a secretary, you hire someone to take the minutes, if there are formal minutes that have to be taken. Initial meetings, one of those things we suggest is facilitators, if you hire facilitators, then you meet with the school committee, you can say, what are some of the things that you have, and they can be ream or concerns. No solutions, don't even. And the same thing, you meet with the selectmen, the finance commission, before you start the process, find out, are there some concerns out there, what's the feeling about the process, about trying to expand your region. Now, and the other thing is, and the next thing you do is you would start, in the process you would start with the current agreement, you review each section, you use a tracking agreement document process where you take things out, knocks it out in black, and you put it in in italics, and then you seek approval for each section of the agreement's review. What would happen is, as you do each section, you would send it to Christine Lynch, Department of Education, she would be the contact person. She then would advise whether this should make much or not, whether the Commissioner would agree to this, that you want to do. She also then checks with legal over there, so that you know at the end of the process that they will accept it. You just cannot go through a 15, 20-page agreement, somebody needs two weeks to do it. You want to be careful. The next part is lawyers, the district review the changes to make sure they're legal. Who is your counsel for your?
Dupre Law.
What?
Dupre Law.
Okay, Dupre, and what about the towns?
Don't remember the towns.
Is it Mary?
I don't remember.
Generally, you would have your counsel, is it Russ Dupree?
Mm-hmm.
I've worked with Russ, so.
Yep.
It would review that, working with it, with the process. Then you take all the town councils, they also see the process. Because I never will be here at a town meeting, someone's going to say, did our counsel review this, and did they agree to that? So, again, you want everybody looking at it before you go to town meeting. And then the facilitator would seek, gets approval of the completed updated agreement, town meeting votes, and the Commissioner signs. But again, it's one of the things, is before it goes to town meetings, you make sure that the Commissioner said, if this is voted, I will sign one. And then the other aspects that you've got to make sure of, and I know you've done some review already, but that regional agreement should address all Sec. 1, Set. 14b, all the sections in there, this has to be in agreement, and all required sections must be up to date and correct when necessary, especially the pre-format 1993. Anything in that has to be updated, there's a number of agreements, I can tell you, that are pre-1993 that have not been updated. So some things in the districts have been calling us to look at those. Now, you don't have to read this, this is just standard language, is the most agreements, and I think it's similar to your language, but it basically talks about, the fact is, what happens is, if the school committee wants to amend an agreement, you can put the process at the beginning. If a town wants to amend an agreement, they can get people to, usually 10%, and say, I want to have an amendment, and they can start an amendment process. Then it tells you the secretary and so forth, and you have to do petitions and so forth to go with that. But in your particular case, if you're proposing, you can go ahead and propose the agreement, inform the committees that we recommend that you do. The Community Relations Plan, in working with the facilitators, meeting to the public is open, and we encourage people to attend. Facilitators meet with selectmen, the finance, to explain the changes several times during the process, so they know. Committee and facilitators hold public meetings to explain the proposed amendments several times, you get feedback, PTOs, parents, so they're all involved, newspaper articles and cable TV. So everybody knows what's going on, we use the word transparency, so everybody knows. I would add, I was involved in the summer formation, the Somerset-Bergley Regional School District, and they were given, they had indicated that they wanted, each town wanted to have a high school, and currently, what happened was, is Somerset, Berkeley twisted into Somerset. The school building authority said, if you want a new high school, then that's a form of a regional school district. So they formed the regional school district. And before, what we did is, I worked with them, and they came up with what they felt with the regional agreement. And they went out, I mean, nine different meetings, with all different aspects, all different groups, came back with about six things that people had concerned of, worked those, went out again, and everybody said, okay. And then they went out again, came back, and seemed to be no objections any of them. Then they went out before town meeting, and we got to town meeting, like 70% or 80% of the people voted in favor of the region, like, everybody knew what was in there and what was going to happen. The significant issues of governance, the one person will vote, and five ways of doing that, that you'd have to do, and you have to take a look at it. In your case, if you, right now, I believe there are three on each of the, well, we're going to roll up, well, you've had to figure out, there's five ways, this will be an important piece of how would you do that if it became a fully pre-K, K-12 district, how would their representation be? You can have, if you, example, if you have residency and a vote in each town, then it's based, the amount of school committee members is based on your total population. So if one community has 60% of the population of the 40, you say 10 members, maybe it'd be six or four. However, if you said that, okay, we want even numbers, as long as they run across the district, and you could have even numbers, and you don't have to worry about the populations at that level. But there are five ways to do that, that you can take a look at, but that would be an issue, yes?
Right now, they're three and three, is it possible that they could just stay the three and three like they are now?
Sure. Yeah, however, what's the population of the two communities?
It's 60, 40.
Then that would not happen, because you'd have to, you'd be within 10%. You'd have to run across lines, there's other ways you take them. That way, I'm just pointing that out, you have to, that's the governance, we should take a look at. It's constitutional, it's required that each one person will vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ruth was just articulating the same question. What do you mean by crossing lines?
What happens is?
You're representing the whole region?
Yeah. When I, I was superintendent in Narragansett, and Templeton was like 80% of the district, and Phillipston was like 20%. So if you had them, and you'd probably say like eight and two, well, they decided they wanted eight members, they went five and three. So what they said is that you have residency requirement, there'll be three members from Phillipston and five from Templeton, but they run on a general election across lines. So people in Templeton voted for Phillipston, Phillipston voted for Templeton. Is that covers it? Because now you're one vote in one district, one vote. If you could have the numbers then, could be that way if you want to. But I mean, that's one of the things to be, yeah, there has to be work through, acceptable there, so you may benefit from it, you need to know that. The other one is your assessment, the law is statutory, it's outlined in statute, the other can be an agreement or alternate method, district proposal method to approve by DESC. I won't go through all of this, but this talks about the law, about the statutory method, which you can read, and it also, this talks about an alternate method that you could have, you have to vote it. Now, the interesting thing is, on the statutory method, it's that that's what you use, you use that every year. If you go to an alternate method, you have to have that alternate method, voted by each town, each year, you use the alternate method, and then you have to notify the Department of Education. And that's something that you get into the process, you go through a statutory method, and then a, if you wanted an alternate method, whatever. What are you using now, statutory or some more?
Statutory.
Yeah, so you go with that. It has to be defined, certain things in the statutory have to be defined, and we recommend you define a words and then also a spreadsheet. Now, the other analysis that has to take place, you should have to develop a budget for fully regionalized districts. So you've got to take the region, the two elementarys, put them all together, what's your budget going to be? And in some cases, you have, some of that you can make, it's a procedure. Estimate income of fully regionalized district, what's going to be the income? Then you do the assessment comparison, education costs today, education costs in fully regionalized. So right now, each town has their own budget, and they also have the regional budget, so what's that total cost? Then you go fully pre-K, pre-K-12, then you figure out what that cost is, so people know what's it going to be. There have to be teacher contract comparisons, salary benefits, support staff, salary benefits. Also, one of the other things that has to be, and I didn't put it in, I remember it, is that currently, I believe that the region owns the town, am I correct? However, the elementary schools are owned by the towns, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
You have to have a process now, because the law says that the, that the school committee has to have control of the building. In a number of regional cases, what they do, if the town can still own the building, but it's a lease by the region to the town, and they have control of the day-to-day operations, then it comes down to, is when I was in Narragansett, we took care of the daily maintenance, daily things. If there was a project under $5,000, the district took care of it. If it was over $5,000, the town took care of it. Now, an example would be a new roof, new boiler, a serious outside workout to be done, new parking license, whatever, whatever number you choose, some districts have 10, whatever number, that has to be worked out, that piece of it. Again, so that they have it, so that it's processed by the leasing, the control of who's responsible for what. Now, let's just take a look at it again, so we can talk about it. The regional committee would write amendments in the regional agreement, they make sure that they are compliant, produces, keeps in touch with DESC every step of the way, keep in touch with them. If you have a community relations plan, implement it, you can establish how you're going to keep people informed, how you're going to make sure everybody knows. I recommend to the school committee, and to you approval, no approval, they recommend this should be an improvement, an amendment to you. You then have the choice to approve it, not approve it and make any changes, it comes to you, if you want for that one, and then it goes up. Then the amendment is sent to DESC for initial approval. Now, what happens is, if you do it correctly, as you do every meeting, you're doing every section, so they can go over the final document, you send it to them, and then the way you send it to them is you have the strikeouts and the additions on your current agreement, and then you hit the button, it cleans it all up, and you have what is the actual agreement look like. Amendment sent to the selectmen of each town after initial approval by DESC, and that's important, that they get it. Then the community relations plan, you follow, how you're going to inform the people, and the communities vote on the amendment or regional agreement at town meeting. At town meeting, it can be a voice vote, a hand vote, or it can be a ballot vote at town meeting, it's up to them, there's no requirement, no requirements, it has to like be a voice vote. If you're forming a brand-new region, two towns are coming together, just as somebody reads that, that is a requirement, that they have to have a ballot vote at town meeting, but the fact you're already together, you don't have to. Now, selectmen will place the, well, on the warrant, vote as approved or disapproved the amendment, if approved, the desired amendment is certified, the desired agreement is certified, votes are sent to DESC, and then the Commissioner would sign it, the recommendation of his people. I don't think the Commissioner reads it frankly, through, I think he relies on his staff to do that. So, then that would happen, then you'd have the signed agreement.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
What percentage is that vote, is it 50, is it a majority?
Majority vote.
Majority.
Majority vote. Even if it's a ballot, still a majority vote.
Thank you.
Majority vote in each town. Take a seat. Timeline, choose a date to that town meeting, approve the updated agreement, recommend current town meetings, choose dates for public hearings before town meeting, you work backwards to say, okay, when we want to go town meeting, we have to have that often ahead of our meetings, and how much work, the community relations plan, update meetings and press releases, choose dates and locations. The timeline will influence based on the date the assessment needs to be in place for the farm and used budget. Some districts, we're working with a district now that has a real problem, and so they need to get that settled for next year. You don't necessarily have to do that, so you could take your time, whatever, depends what is important that you need to do. And so what we say is, the amendment process requires careful thought, needs you to be a significantly community relations program, length of time, the amendment can take a few years or more. The transition, it takes place after the vote is fully regionalized. So right now, you have three committees plus a union, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what you'd have is another committee that would come in, would be the regional committee, that would be in place for a year, because you now have to move all of the things from the elementarys up into the region. Staff has to be all moved up, and everything else has to happen, so it takes about a year to do that. I've worked on that, did that with Somerset-Bergley, it takes a year to do that, transition a year, possibly. But meanwhile, the three school committees are still in operation, and while, and you have to come up with a transition committee, and they can be appointed or elected for that, and then you have to go through a process by which the permitting people will come on to the committee. So it takes quite a bit, there's quite a bit to that to do. And regulations, you need to have facilitators and legal assistants throughout this process. Also, facilitators are a neutral party in the process, so that, you know, you know, there's nothing one way or the other, and the facilitators are here to work with you through that process. Just to make sure everybody clearly understands, I'm here today as the executive director, presenting to you what the process is, which we go to alter regions. If you decide to go forward, and you have to put out a request or proposal, and we would, we would respond to that as well as anybody else through that whole Chapter 32 process, it's all done correctly. Okay? Any questions? I better go too fast, but you have it in front of you.
Steve, I do have a question. As you know, we finished the, they finished the feasibility study. There was some concern from members of the committee, I wouldn't say probably every member of the committee, had some concerns in regards to, you know, they voted to move forward with discussions of this regionalization, but there were still some concerns, and Tom, I think you expressed it much more eloquently than I probably will, but the concerns are really about, how do we know, we didn't feel that it was enough there to actually have a financial understanding. So would part of these next steps, when you're talking about the analysis, is that when we would be able to actually have more discussion on that concerned area?
Yes.
That would be part of this whole process?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
You have to go through, when you come to the regional agreement, you've got to go through it, because the first question people are going to ask, what's the cost factor? And so you have to go through this, and the issue, and I did, they did share that, I just see that report, and they did indicate there'd be some savings here, some cost there, whatever, you have to put that together into the, into the assessment document, so now you know. So now you know what the assessment was going to be there. Meanwhile, you have to take, take a look at what to pay now, so that's the first question we're going to ask, what are we going to pay now under the region, what are we going to pay under that? The other thing you have to take very carefully is, is you take a look at the, to develop a full budget, you have to take a look at your budget, and you're going to look into the town budgets. Now, in a number of cases, in the town budget has the school budget, okay? But there are other factors that are in there, teacher benefits, the insurances, I mean, you have health insurance, you can have, get a disability, you can have other types of health, also have insurances on the building, any and all things, they have workman's comp, liability, all those things have to be dug out of the, or out of the town budget now. We worked at Williamson, Lansbury, and Williamson had broken this all out, so that was it, but Lansbury had been kind of embedded in the budget, so you had to pull all those things out. And also, you have to go over with people, the fact is, the towns, Chapter 70 now, will come directly to the region. They get all concerned, but you're also losing all those expenses, those expenses are going to the region, they're not staying there. Chapter 70 goes out, Medicare will go to the region, I'm not sure what Medicare you have. But any of those things, you have to take a look very carefully at the town budgets to see what's going to happen, and so you can explain to them is, okay, you take your town budget, this is leaving, this is leaving, the income is leaving, but here's your bottom line to that, so they can see. Obviously, they don't want to pay more. The other thing on teacher salaries, you have to take a look at the salaries, just so everyone knows, the law states very clearly that when you regionalize, no teacher can be paid less. The law doesn't say they go to the higher salary schedule automatically, it only says they can't be paid any less. You have to have a process by which you would then negotiate, by the way, if you're from a region, you negotiate new contracts, and you have to go through that process. And I don't know where everybody, we'd have to take a look at, what we do is, we ask your superintendent, business people, to give us, we take your salary structure, we take where everybody is, come up with a total for all three, and then you start seeing where those, where do they all fit in? You have approximately, how many staff between all of it?
196 staff members.
Teachers?
Just staffing.
Okay. Okay, you have to, each of those, you have to take a look, how, what do you have for support staff, do you have contracts, collective bargaining agreements for them?
No, actually, the only unions that we have here are the teachers. Everyone else is not.
Okay. But then what would happen is, you'd have to put those together, but by the way, I want to tell you, it says only teachers cannot make less, doesn't say, it doesn't address anything in that. Realistically, you don't, obviously, you regionalize, you don't take something away. But it doesn't mean to regionalize to automatically get a pay raise. You have to work that, that has to all be worked through in negotiations.
Our parent professionals, custodian, cafeteria, they're all considered a unified group, so they have one scale anyway.
They have a scale that you've approved, but not in a collective bargaining process?
That's correct.
I assume you've approved the scale, plus any of the benefit structure?
Yep.
Okay. That would be a little bit different. Yes, Maron?
Steve, I think my question is around the timing of that. This particular part of the process is one that I think the committee is intensely interested in doing sooner rather than later. I think at the last meeting, based on the feasibility study and the need to move forward with a grant application, the group did take a vote, but I think there was a real need and desire to have much more concrete information before we even moved to a step of forming the RAC committee or whatever. So I'm wondering, can the analysis precede some of those other steps, or is that not logical in the normal process?
Normally not logical, because you put the committee together, and you go through the whole process as you do it. Remember, one of the things that's going to come up is your governance issue, I mean, how you govern, like one person will vote, there is no, there's five choices, it's constitution, so what's going to work for you people, that will come up, and then this other piece. So what can happen is, you form the committee, and the committee then can say, okay, let's handle those two things first, and you want to go with the others. Now, you recently had, your agreement was updated, because you moved the?
2012.
You moved the, what, sixth grade up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's been approved by the Commissioner?
Yeah, that's all done, all approved.
So I think probably you would not have a problem with the other sections, the thing you're going to have is the governance in this section, the money. Now, other districts we work with have, they were pretty, we're working with one now that last, that was 1987, so they got so many different things in there, that we're not, because every form changed a lot of things. So again, that's, and they put the other part, when they updated the regional agreement, and they got all these amendments to it, so if you try to figure out what actually took place, it's difficult. So we're involved in, we're going to be working with them to have one clean document, is what you want, you have a clean document. So, to answer your question, form that committee, these are the things you go into, those probably the two areas that you want to do.
And theoretically, that group could come to some consensus?
Correct, yeah.
That it's not?
Right.
Beneficial to?
Right, they'd come to that. If they come to that, then you, frankly, it'd be political, on a purely political basis, that they offer both towns, you've got to have them agree to the, what they come to you with, because there's no use, you can't, and I would not take it by a majority vote, because then you go back to the town, they say, I didn't vote for this, why should we[1602.41] to the town, they say, I didn't vote for this, why should we vote for this? I mean, they got, everybody's got to come to an agreement that this is a good thing to do. And it's a good thing for the education of the children, and it's a good thing for the towns to have that in the long term. And I was here, when was I here, last spring?
Yeah, yeah, actually, last March.
Yeah. And one of the things that you have, problems of staffing issues between the districts, and kids were going to be losing out, so that's one of the things why you asked me to come in and talk about it. Well, if you approve a K-12 district, you don't have those problems. But it's a process. And again, those things, basically, because you have an updated approved agreement, you go right into that analysis, is where you go.
There's a certain expectation that this type of regionalization will drive efficiencies. How is that captured? Is that captured in this type of analysis?
Yes, yeah. You wind up and see, first of all, it depends what your efficiencies are. You know, your efficiencies, one is your central office efficiencies, what your staff is doing, where they are, they spend their time, and can they, are they spending, how much time do they spend in dealing with kids, are they spending children issues, or are they spending everything else, because you've got to do everything three times? When you pay your dues to us, I think I get three checks. Okay? I mean, how do they, how can they, how can we streamline to be more efficient in your office and people more efficiently use that you can? And then you take a look at, on your staffing issues, because now you can be four, point five, or one point, six, point four. It's not an issue of who's responsible for what salaries, it's a district salary schedule, benefits are the same, because people now want to get full-time jobs when they're qualified for benefits. So when you put a point four, say, Berlins, or a point four, whatever, you're not, what do they have to be?
They have to be, they have to be point five in order to receive benefits.
Yeah.
And so we've done point six, point four, when probably we wanted to do point five, point five, or actually, in this particular case, we had someone who was point eight.
Yeah. Well, when you, when you're fully regionalized, that does not become an issue whatsoever. The other piece of the pie that comes to is that if you wind up with issues of like special education coming in, it's a district responsibility, and it's not just one town, if one person, they move it to one town, and K-six, K-five, that town's responsible, or it's a regional district, they're like helping you to, you're buying like insurance because you never know who's going to get hit what all of the time. I know when I was in, Eric Hansen, that happened to us, but we never had to worry about what was it, it was a regional district, and one year maybe more from Tumble, maybe more from Phyllis, and but the run it worked out with that one. So you can also, what are the types of efficiency that you're giving a little better than I do on your operation with the J-Place?
Are there other tools besides regionalization to try to track some efficiencies in the central office, like region is a fiscal agent or?
Well, one of the, one of the laws that we tried to get through, which we didn't get through, we got two laws through, one is forming the regional reimbursement, transportation reimbursement fund, where the money can go in and act, stay there until you need it in state one year, and then regionalization issues. But you can form, what we tried to, what we could get through, we couldn't, and that the region could be the, could be the fiscal agent, and then you can have contracts with each of the towns, and then everything goes through the region. But again, is the fact is you still get some issues that you still got to deal with, you can work that, the issue could go that direction if you wanted to. But part of it, if you go through this, part of it might show that, that's what you do. It's also, let's be upfront with everybody, is a political aspect of, do people really want to do that? Sometimes, we were dealing with the district, we were concerned that the region wouldn't take care of the elementary schools, and there'd be issues with budgets and how much money they would do that. And one of the things we proposed was that they have to come up with, the school council comes up with a preliminary budget, the school committee has to put that in as their preliminary budget, and then they take it from there, so they pay attention to it. So they were just nervous of that particular district.
I just think for simple things, like an invoice, you know, you can pay it once, it's there three times.
Right. But that's your efficiencies in your central office, and what you want to do and what you want to do with that. You've had some turnover in the business area, obviously.
Just a moment.
So again, it's quite, and I was a business administrator. I was in New Orleans for fifteen years, a business administrator, last for assistance to the central business personnel, with Eric Hansen. I supered him in business, I was the business manager.
Are you looking forward?
I was just going to say.
I'm retired.
Yeah.
I'm retired from that.
The cost to regionalize, I think last week, it was estimated that it may cost fifty thousand, and that could be covered by a grant. Are there other costs, or is that a reasonable cost to regionalize?
Well, I don't want to say what the cost will be, because we'd have to go through all of this and tell you. I know what the, that you got the study last week, said savings here and there, but it didn't get you that, that, that fully regionalized assessment, that's what takes, that's what does it. What is the assessment? Because there could be some savings, there could be some cost. So you have to, you have to put that in the assessment process, and then compare back to what people have paid today.
Okay, so I'm thinking of all the lawyers involved in this, and people involved in making this happen. There's got to be a lot of upfront costs, and I'm trying to get an understanding of what this is going to cost us.
There are, there are, you can apply, there are two areas that I know of that you can apply for grant money to run the process for you. And what happens if you regionalize, then you would get fifty dollars for the first year, fifty dollars per student from each of the K-fives, who would give you additional funds that year, and that was in your study, I believe, that you saw. But again, is CIC, community, CIC, the Community Center Grant?
Innovation.
Innovation.
And Community Innovation Grant has funds that you can apply for. One of the things that has to happen is you, at the regional school committee, have to vote to want to do it, and each of the select one have to vote to want to do this, do the study, and then they will give you the funds, and they will do that. The other aspect is that, I talked to Chris Lynch today, and there is a hundred thousand dollars in a budget line item they have, they're not totally sure. It says Regionalization Association, they're not totally sure, they're going to check on that, and that could be a source of funding for facilitators and new lawyers to get through this process. I think that's what you-
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. So you want to seek the grant money. The state would like to see regionalization fully K-12, I mean, they're very aware of how you operate, and they know, would favor that pretty much. Again, that, the case is, and see, I don't think, one of the things, the fact that your agreement is there, I mean, you've already had it approved of those sections, so I mean, really you're going to deal with the analysis on your assessment, your budget, the contracts, and you're going to deal with your governance issue. I mean, that's, and I've looked briefly at that, I'm sure it's new, I don't know. So I think you're not in bad shape as some other people are with that.
I have two questions. One is the governance. So if we did three and three, would the three from Berlin have a two-thirds vote?
Okay.
Or, I mean, is that, you can't have three and three with one vote for each member, right?
Here's what can happen, okay? What you do is, he said, what's your, what's your percentage?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, okay? So if you want to equal votes, okay, there is a system by which you can give, you can have, because if you're elected by the town who live in, in a resident of that town, so it's three, then a proportion of voting will be calculated. So you have three at the table, that's one of the ways to, remember I talked to you about the, let me see, back, here we go.
Five different.
Yeah, five different ways to do that. One is, and I don't have, I have a lot, but one of them is proportion of voting that you could have that way. One is you run across, equal number across lines, and so there's a vote. Or strictly, it would be in your case, it might be, let's say there was ten people, let's make it sixty-four. If it's a sixty-four, I'm just trying to make it easy. So again, there's five different ways to do that. So you could have, sometimes people feel it's important to say, you have equal numbers sitting at the table, everyone has the same voice, but then the vote comes down, it could be proportional, if you want to have them elected and represent, and citizens of your own town. Again, that's one of the things you go through.
And then my other question is, some of these efficiencies that we're talking about, is there any way to put that in monetary terms? Have you ever done that?
What do you mean deficiencies?
Efficien, efficiencies.
Efficiencies. Yeah. Yeah, we can take a look, you take a look at those things, you take a look, number one is, you take a look at your central office, how that's operating, that's where your big issues are going to come. Are you going to be able to save, or you're going to not have to increase, but you're going to stay the same, because they're now going to be doing it once, not three times. So that's where you come off. Some of them, they call opportunity costs, you're not going to face that cost. If you continue on the way you're going, well, you're going to have to add other staff in order to meet all of the stuff coming down from the state. What's coming down right now, you're getting from the Bill two-two-two, which is on the-
The discipline.
Discipline bill. You've also got all these, you think it just started, it just started, and all the observation, evaluation of teachers, all that's coming down the pipe. So one of the things you're going to have to do, as a small district, that you can, you know, whereas there, the common things are doing three times, if that stopped, then you could only have it once. And also, then you can work some things between your staff, between levels if you need to, and evaluations and so forth. And also, again, opportunity, by the way, the reason I, I'm trying to negotiate a new teacher contract.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we currently negotiate three contracts, so there's a cost savings, at least in terms of the legal costs.
And it's also people time, how many times you sit at the table to do that. And let's be upfront, if you give one union one thing, what happens next?
The other union.
Yeah, the other union. So I mean, it would play off. I was in, when I was in Norman, there were nine unions. Three teachers and five or six of the other, so I mean, it was, then they played everything off on us. Anything?
Nate, you've done this before. If we move to start this process eventually, what percentage actually finish the process and regionalize out of the districts you've worked with?
Well-
Do they all finish?
Somerset, Berkeley did, Air Shirley, we didn't work, Eric, people that are part of our, part of our consulting group, work Air Shirley. Matt Reed and George Frost are part of our group, they did that. They were employed there, but they're part of the group, so they, Air Shirley did. Montemoy down on the Cape did. I did some presentations, but I'll definitely work with them. We hadn't gotten into this, actually, we're getting into this now because of the need in districts. We worked out with, let's see, Granville, Southwick, we call them Granville, to fully regionalize. We've worked with, up in North Adams, with Can, vocational, they have brought two different towns in successfully. The issue was interesting, and we worked with Lansborough and Williamson, and they stopped, now they're going, looking back again, they want to do that. So it's a whole lot of politics going on there, but again, we provide information, and they stopped it because they had a building issue, now they're going to move forward, or at least try to. So it's been more successful than it did. We also worked with Minuteman, vocational, and Lexington, updating their agreement, running, changing it. And what happened is ten districts, ten towns voted yes, five passed votes, they didn't have enough information, one voted no. So they're still working on that. So they've got some issues because a building is also coming into it. How many, how big are you going to build it for? So we worked with them, so. Again, it all depends what people want to see happen. And I keep saying, look at the edu, what's going to happen to the education of the children? That's what you really got to look at, not the adults. And interestingly is, when I was in Vermont, I spent five years in Vermont, nineteen eighty-five, and they forced them in the seventies to regionalize, it was all small towns, I mean. And you know the biggest complaint? Who are we going to play basketball during the season? That was their concern. So, so they did, they stayed for us, and there's no way, you know, you could have, trying to have a hundred kids K-12, just wasn't going to work, so. And again, also some people ask, who are we going to play Thanksgiving Day? Yeah! Those things happen, so. Keep, you've got to keep the eye on the wall. What's, what are you trying to accomplish?
Do you have a question, Andrew?
I did. I don't know, was Granville, or do you have some of these more recent regionalizations that are similar set up to ours, to elementary that are fully?
Yes, yes. Well, here's an example. Granville, okay, this, it'll take me a minute to explain, so, okay. So Southwick, Tallahassee, okay, here's, you know what Massachusetts, you know the little block out and head west that goes down like that, the little spot, well, that's Southwick. So here's Southwick, here's Granville, here's Tallahassee, okay? And Southwick and Tallahassee formed, Southwick being the larger one, Granville only like ten percent of them are that. Granville at the time said, no, we don't want to form the region, we'll keep, we'll keep our K-six, but we'll send our kids to Southwick High School. At a turn, as time went on, Granville, Slakman, Special Schools, said, we just can't afford, we're having to cut back every year, we can't have what we can't have, it's just not going to go. So they then petitioned, and they got money, and we were hired to work with them, Paul Gaddo Ducci's out there, and I worked, we worked with them on the regionalization to do that, and it was fine. They voted to go fully regionalization in Granville, did have to save some money, about two hundred and fifty thousand a year because of that, and they got a better education for their kids. Southwick's reason was, they didn't save money, but what happened was, they had, on a campus, they had three buildings, high school, middle school, elementary, all in need of work. So the school building authority said, if you fully regionalize Southwick, we'll treat that as one project, not as a single project. So they got all three schools, they're going to get some work on it because of that. So that's where the regionalization was successful. And the same thing with, what happens, Somerset and Berkeley, when Berkeley was K-eight, they're owned in nine twelve, they regionalized. I went last week to their ribbon cutting, they opened a new, a new high school, so. They did brand new. Their one, their things were, one of the seconds of their high school was sinking, so they had to do something about it, so. Anything else, Megan?
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Really appreciate it. Stay in touch, Karen.
Any follow-up, let me know what I can do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Did you find out from Christine Lynch when that grant for regionalization would have to be due by?
No, it's a hundred thousand they have in there, and they're just trying to figure out what that actually was. It's put in there, they didn't know it, they found it in their budget.
Okay.
They're trying to figure out what's it going to be used for, so they're trying to see. Chris hopes it's going to be for regionalization, so she can give money like you need to have for regionalization purposes.
We're just thinking like next steps, because I know the CIC grant would be due-
Yeah. The CIC is due October thirteenth. My suggestion to you is apply to the CIC. You're going to have to, you're going to have to vote, the region now has to vote, yes, we want to.
They did that last time.
And you have to, both towns have to vote. If both towns do not vote, then it's not going to go anywhere. I spoke to Tim Dodd, so they both have to vote. Now, all it is, and frankly, I'll say to you, Slakman is, you're just saying, let's apply for a grant, let's see what happens. If not, if your regional agreement, everything stays the same, it's not like, you know, say, say you come up with a new agreement, it goes to town meeting, they vote it down, you still have what you want, it's still the same thing. The regional agreement you have today still is in place, it doesn't, doesn't lapse.
And you may have found some efficiencies along the way.
Yeah. Now, maybe some things to say, why we want to do this? Okay? Megan?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks.
Does that have to be a unanimous?
What?
Vote of the selectmen?
No.
Two-thirds.
Majority. Everything, everything is majority.
It'd be two-thirds, because there's three members on the unit.
Okay, so moving forward, next we have on the list petitions and audiences related to items on the agenda. Do we have any? Okay, next CPAC, another school year.
Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. I'm Chrissy Stella, and I am the president of, from Boylston, for CPAC. I have for you tonight, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year old report with all of our information. I'm going to run through really quickly some of the highlights of our report. But everyone will get a copy. So wait for me to kind of get a written piece of it. But we had a very successful year, and we're really looking forward to this school year, and I just thought we could kick this off right by getting you the last year's report now, instead of waiting till October, and this way you'll know when our goals are for this school year. Okay, so you may or may not know, our officers from last year was me, Karen Gershia was our vice president, Rochelle Paray is our secretary, and our treasurer, Lori Mikulak, was a pretty constant board. Notice, we do not have a Berlin co-president, as we did not have one last year, and I am still in search of a co-president from Berlin, if anyone has good ideas, I'd love to get some parent volunteers out there to represent Berlin and their, their needs and suggestions. So those were our officers. I did a little section on all school involvement, just to show the school committee, all the various groups and the districts that were kind of, you know, we have our fingers in, including, you know, the BES PTO, BMS Link, Tohantos PTO, school councils at BES and Tohanto, and the literacy committee as well. And we really tried to make an effort this year, as we always do, to go to kindergarten information nights, all the open houses, and preschool info nights as well, to kind of explain to parents what CPAC does, and, and the different programs and advocacy efforts that, that the Special Education Parent Advisory Council does. So after I kind of did the all-school involvement and the community involvement, I wanted to tell you all about our programs. A few years ago, we started this program called the National Inclusive Schools Week. It is about inclusion in public schools. It was started in Newton, and they have taken it to a whole new level, where they have a theme, inclusion according to the National Inclusive Schools Week program, can be ethnicity and socioeconomic type of inclusion. We wanted to focus on what our school district needs, and so we came up with a theme last year of giving gifts. What gifts do you have to share? We wove it into the curriculum at BMS and BES. So it was part of their writing assignments for December, and it became incredibly successful. Mr. Goodhigh in BES completely, you know, really put his all behind it. Every, every teacher had their students writing their essays on this particular topic. So we had 100% involvement over at BES. But at BMS, it was left up to the teachers individually, and still we had 80% of the teachers and students involved in it. And it got coverage in the paper. Kids love sharing about what they're good at, what they have to share with other kids. And it, the object of the programs, to really let kids know that we all have gifts to share. And I don't know what we're going to do yet this year, we're working on it next, in the next month, and we'll continue that program. Tohoto's a little different. We really want Tohoto students to do inclusion on a student level. So we let the student activity committees come up with their own ideas. So, for example, the Hope Committee and Student Council did their own programs around it. And we kind of let it be student-run, and we don't get a lot of feedback because of that, but that's okay, because the idea is that you're spreading the idea of inclusion, and that everyone's going to be included in whatever way the students feel is the best way to do it. And that's okay with me. And on top of that, we also have speakers, obviously. Last year, we did five different speakers we brought in. We did Transition 101 from the Federation for Children with Special Needs, high school to college. We did incidental teaching for, it was really a cool program by realizing children's strengths that talked about correcting behaviors and using instances, everyday moments as a parent to do that. And parents, it was very well received. We were very appreciative that Karen Willner was able to do our Annual Parents' Rights and Responsibilities program, as well as Nate Dean Exstrom came in to give us some tips, techniques of de-escalating challenging behaviors and situations. And it was very, well, in a condensed version, it was a takeoff on what the teachers and staff had received on, on the same theme. So it's being reiterated in multiple ways, and parents are hearing the same thing that, that the staff was hearing, and that was great. And then we had a wonderful speaker come in in March who did an ADHD program on how to make your child ADHD-successful. And she was wonderful, Carol, you know. And so that was our, those were all our speakers from last year. We want you to know that our membership is still growing, we're over 90 members now. 93 at the end of the year, went from 88 to 93. And I think for a small district, that's probably what we can expect. I don't think we can expect any more than five families to join per year. I don't know what the percentage is, you know, based upon who's eligible. But from what I can see, in larger districts, when I go to conferences, I rarely see CPACs that have even over 50 families, even in large districts, involved. So I think we're very fortunate to be able to have this many people hooked into our Yahoo group. We are continuing to do Excellent Educator Awards. We honor 10 teachers and staff. They significantly impacted the education of our children, and they were nominated by parents. There's five from Boylston Elementary, five from Tohoto, none from Berlin this year. But next year, Mr. Campbell and I have come up with a new way to get nominations from Berlin. And I'm sure we'll have more nominations next year from them. That's a very special time to be able to make standout teachers be appreciated. We want to thank everyone who bought a lemon pie in the fall. We were able to offer two $300 scholarships this June. One student from Boylston, one student from Berlin. And we're going to do that again this year. We're going to do lemon pies again at all the open houses and see if we can offer another two scholarships, because that was great. We have a new website this year. That was one of our goals last year, was to get our website up and running. It is, it's own standalone website at www.cpac-berlin-boylston.org. You can also find it under the BBRSD website, under parent groups, and it'll take you straight to the website. You will find, we try really hard, all the minutes are up there. Every end-of-the-year report for the last five years are up there. We have now have a parent resource page, a website resource page. And the next step is to put the calendar up onto that website. But it's really, it's wonderful to be able to have this really inclusive website that we can, we can put up all sorts of information. So check it out. All right, so that leads us back to our goals. So these are our goals for next year. All right, we're going to continue to do some of these things we've been doing for many years. Maintaining strong communication with the Director of Personnel Services and the school committees. We want to continue to attend district school meetings and get input to programs and policies. Provide workshop for parents. We want to work closely with all three principals to increase our awareness of our mission activities and to promote our group teachers and staff. Provide an ongoing resource to parents, of course, on special education process and laws. And continue to bring quality speakers. I think those are things that we do on a consistent basis. We added on some more for this year. One, we are going to maintain that website, we're going to update and enhance its content. Number two, we'll continue to maintain a strong presence through National Inclusive Schools Week. Three is we're going to invite staff and administrators to our events and presentations, especially that might be related specifically to their field. Four is we're going to continue special education awards, senior scholarship recipients. Five, lemon pie fundraiser. Six, this is one that is near and dear to my heart, is I really want us to work towards establishing a parent-to-parent support group in the district. I think that will really strengthen parent relationships and understanding the special education process. We have a few pie, eyes of the sky kind of goals. One is to institute Skype options for our programs. And of course, we'll update and add to our membership list. But we really want to thank the school committees, the administrators, and everyone for supporting our mission as we go through trying to enhance and make this district inclusive and fair for special education students and to give parents resources to help them help themselves kind of thing. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to ask is, I wanted to ask everyone, or invite everyone to come to our meet and greet on Wednesday, September 17th, 7:00 PM in this room. We are going to have a meet and greet with special education teachers and staff from all three schools. I know it's the same night as BMS's open house, but that's at 6:00 or at 7:00. We might hold off the meeting a few minutes so that we can get BMS staff here. And that's our first meeting of the school year. So I guess that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Are all your meetings here in this room?
We try, yes. Except for our summer meetings, we try to do everything in this room. And everything's already reserved. And they're, you know, so it's kind of nice that we always know that we'll be in here.
Because you can Skype easily from this room.
Yeah, the trick is with the Skype, is usually it's one-on-one, so to do a group Skype, that's the trick. And I think there's a fee for that one, right, isn't there, Christy? If you do, if you do a group Skype, the one-on-one Skypes are, are free. But if you do a group Skype, then you have to pay, I think, like a monthly fee or something like that.
Yeah, so it's something we're going to have to definitely look into, because some of the barriers of people not being able to come to CPAC meetings is childcare. And then do you offer childcare? Boy, it seems to me that maybe Skype would be a better option, especially for speakers. You know, if you can't make, we have an ADHD and anxiety specialist coming. And it might be perfect for you, if you can't leave your ADHD and anxiety child at home because they're overwhelmed with homework that night. So being able to Skype in might be an easier option, because it's a speaker speaking and you'll be able to get it live. Of course, everything's available on the cable channels, but, but you know, sometimes that is not convenient. So that's the idea on Skype. I think we'll probably start with speakers and then kind of go to the business meetings after that.
What about Nene, have you looked into Nene?
Oh, no, we haven't, that's a good suggestion.
Because they could watch it live too, and I could just...
Yes, any of that option, I think that's kind of where we're going, is trying to use technology to try to involve more parents who maybe can't get out in the evening. Yeah, if you can get, sometimes you can't get speakers to agree, because they want to keep their content, you know, on their own website or whatever. But, but that's a good suggestion too. And we have a couple of tech who was in our room who can figure all of these things out.
Another person that's very savvy with all of that is our new math teacher, Wesley Swenson.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was actually able to, he sent me a video of his class that he does. And he actually does that so if students are absent, they can actually log into his blog, if you will, and actually watch the class.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So you could ask him how he does that.
As a resource?
As a resource.
That's a great, great idea. And Lori, hi.
Hi, Christy, you always do such a great job, I love you.
Oh, thank you.
Well, they're thorough and yet they're concise and just presented in a really organized way. I'm just curious, I, I feel frustration from you, and I feel it a little too, that of, of the membership of CPAC, are you getting a decent representation from Berlin?
Yes, we are.
So the issue is, they're just not interested in being in the leadership?
That's the key.
Okay. And that makes me feel a little better, actually, at least.
Yes, we have, it's about 50/50. Berlin to Boylston families. But it's a leadership, and ironically, before I came on five, oh, I'm trying to remember, it's 12? Seven years ago, it was almost entirely Berlin families who were in the leadership role at that point. And it slowly turned over back to Boylston, so I do think there'll be a shift. My worry is, I'm afraid that Berlin families are missing out on some important resources that they could be utilizing. That's what I'm always worried about, that they're not seeing everything that they could either be doing for their child, or not knowing about things, events, maybe, I don't know, maybe scholarship recipients, I don't know. But you know, we're just trying to get the word out, it's important. So I'm trying really hard to, to try to involve, at least, I only really need one. I need, I need one good leader from Berlin who really feels passionate about special education for their child, and that would, that will do it. It really, it really would be that one resource person. So, good luck. Oh, we'll figure it out. But you do have to know that this is my last year as president. My, my, to my school, one of my sons has come off an IP already, and my other one will be coming off, I'm sure, in February, March. So I'm done at the end of this year too. So I'm trying to find someone that I can mentor and kind of have me shadow, shadow me for this year from Boylston as well, so that we don't go in flat face next year. So, you know, so the feelers are out there for both towns at this point.
I would just like to say, Christy, it's just amazing that you have over 90 parents involved. That's 5% of our student population, which is just, that's amazing. I've worked in many districts and being a part of the special education department, and to get that amount is just, even in, in bigger districts, like the show was three times our size. And I don't believe they had anywhere near 90.
No, I don't either.
So I just really commend the work that you and the, and the CPAC have done to do that outreach, because I think the more parents you can have involved in a group like that, and having it is organized and structured with themes and agendas and so forth, it's, it really says a lot, because I think parents would see it more as a support as they go through school and understanding that it really helps to advise you on, on what you need to do for education.
Yes, I mean, thank, thank you, but yes, it does not necessarily, it comes from a strong, you know, strong background of people who came before me, who kind of set this whole thing in motion, which is Lori. And what is this in our, in our audience tonight? And, but that's kind of where it started, and then it, it has morphed into trying to, parents just know information. So you don't, you know, I don't need someone, I don't need everybody to be a leader on the board. I mean, I'd love if somebody could take the pie fundraiser, you know, off the plate and just run with it. But it's really more about, let's give you some resources to know how to help your child. And it can be in any, any, any form of that. And that's why, I think when I'm done with the board, I'd like to go to the parent-to-parent support groups, because I think that to me is where I find the most intrinsic value and, you know, that's where I like that piece of it. So I want to turn my focus onto that when I'm done with the board, because I think that's where families really get that informal relationship going. And then often that just leads to more education, and then you have, you know, everything's smoother when everybody's really knows the laws, they really know, they have good relationships with administration. And so hopefully, it's, it's all moving in a real good, positive direction.
I think so, I mean, I, I see the CPAC really working with the schools. And that's not always the case in CPACs in schools.
No.
And that's the way, the way that you're running it is really the way that it's supposed to be, in that you're supporting each other and understanding perspectives from a parent and from school. And then you're working in having this writing curriculum and, and...
And that's, you know, that's kind of, though the next step is always the next piece. Like this year, we did the National Inclusive Schools Week, it was run by the student groups here in Tohoto. In May, our hope is to have a whole night dedicated to adolescents through transition in high school. Everything from mental health support to organization, getting ready for college. So it's, it's, it's about stress management, it's about organizational management. Doesn't matter if your child is special education or excelling, they're all going to need those skills in order to bring them forward as adults. And I really would love to see Tohoto embrace that, and I think they will. But I, I think the CPAC will do, has a good grounding to start that conversation with our adolescents, who can then take it to the next level. And we'll have to utilize the PTO bit, but, but you know, but it has to start somewhere. So it kind of started off as a special education thought of kids who have anxiety or have trouble organizing, or have executive function issues. And then it kind of morphed into this, well, doesn't everybody, when they're about to transition out of their house? You know, doesn't everybody kind of deal with these issues on their own individual level? So I think that's kind of where we're going with it. So, but we've never done a team workshop before. So it may be a flop, but you got to start, and, and I feel like that's the next step, now that we're grounded and we have a good relationship with administration, we have a good idea on policies. And it's like, all right, we can move into these new fields, new, new ways. But thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next Superintendent Exstrom, your report.
Yes, so opening day enrollments at Berlin Memorial. We had, on the first day of school, a total of 186 students registered. We have 22 students in our pre-teen class, 20 in our kindergarten class, 26 in first grade, that's two first-grade classrooms, 27 in our second-grade classrooms, and 18 in each of the third-grade classrooms, that make you 36 students. 26 students in fourth grade, and we have 29 students in fifth grade. So your largest class right now is actually your third-grade group, which is 36 students. So there's two classrooms of 18. We need to keep watching those classes and watching those sizes. And we will continue to get further information in regards to the census. We use the census each year. But what we are, I just spoke with one of the principals this morning, and I have to speak with Carol and the other principal as well. But we now have information too about which students are coming in from private preschools and are coming into our kindergartens. So we need to reach out to those preschools to see if we can get even a better number than what we're getting from our town census, so that we can have a better estimation for kindergartens for the future years. You'll see that especially in Boylston Elementary School, where we have nine students in our preschool classroom. Very small compared to what we have had in the past. Our kindergarten is a total of 38, and first grade is a total of 38. Grade two was, is 51, grade three 57, grade four 53, and grade five is 60, for a total of 306 students. So you can see that in our first grade and kindergarten classrooms, we've brought it down to two classes. But we really need to see a consensus from Boylston to see what do we anticipate for kindergarten for the next year. I don't know what that would mean. And also, if our numbers don't grow in the first grade, we'd be looking at two second-grade classrooms for next year instead of three. So we need to really think about that and be true about our numbers. And of course, it was only the first day, so it's our first day enrollment. And things change a lot between now and October 15th by our first reporting, and then again in December. So as we saw last year in Boylston.
Yeah, I was just going to say last year. Changed a lot.
But I will say that last year in Boylston on our first day, we had more than 19 and 19 in each classroom, because we were getting a lot in over the summer, and then we got a lot more in during the year. So that's at the elementary schools. And then when you look at Tohoto, we have much larger classes than what we have had in the past in regards to our high school numbers, which is fabulous. We're up to 569 students in kid, in grades six through 12. You will see that grades six through 10 are in the 80s, anywhere from 84 to 89 students. And grades 11 and 12 are 72 and 60, which is still a larger number than what we've had over the past few years. So our students are staying in our schools, which is great. I believe last year in eighth grade, we had 91 or 92 students. And so in ninth grade, they've gone to 87. Typically, in the past, you would have lost about 15 or 20 kids. And you're not. So that's wonderful. We're keeping them here, but just also keep in mind that by keeping more students, that means we will, you will see in your proposal and FY16, at least one, if not two additional staff members for our high school. Just to give you a, a heads up on that, that's something we'll be discussing. We currently only have two social studies teachers, but we have three science and four English teachers. So we need to increase our social studies. We also are increasing our STEM programming. So we are also looking at a potential science teacher to increase there as well. So just keep that in mind, we're still having discussions, and that's very preliminary. But I just want people to start thinking about where, where our, where our vision is going as an administrative team and having discussions with the staff members. Those classes are going to start getting bigger, especially if next year we keep the 84 students or around 80. You're, you're now increasing about 20 more students again in another year in school, in our high school.
Any idea how your Ashby Valley number, asking it?
You know what, I don't have that with me right now, and I probably should have, Brad, and I apologize. But I can have that for you for the next meeting. I do know that, but what we have budgeted in Boylston, for example, we're still within the limits of what we budgeted. We did have one student that just moved in this last week. I think we got notified Thursday or Friday that is in Ashby Valley, but we're still within what we had budgeted. Lori?
If we are hiring, or if we are considering hiring new classroom staff here, do we have classrooms currently to put them in? in?
So, no, so what we would do is some of the teachers now, they might be in a couple of classes at once because they rotate based on the, um, prep periods, but that's why in this building, it was actually set up to allow that to happen because each wing, there is an actual work station, like a, it's not just a teacher's room. Each, each, each wing has an actual teacher's work room where they would have their own desk and file cabinets and so forth, which is where they would do their prep time anyway, rather than doing the prep in their classroom. Somebody might be teaching in their classroom, so you have the prep there. That's how the design was actually made in this building to allow that, um, to happen. Laurie, did you have a question?
I did, actually. I had it back when you were introducing all the faculty.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, 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 raised my hand.
Okay.
I'm just saying it occurred to me then to ask. Um, is that, uh, it seemed to me like a significant, bigger number than I recall last year of new faculty coming on. And I wasn't sure, I know we had some retirements.
Yep.
Um, but is it attrition? Is it people leaving? Or is it just kind of normal and that's a?
Sure, that's an awesome question. And actually, last year we had a little bit more, I think two or three more staff than what we had this year. I just announced those that transitioned up, where last year I wouldn't have done that. Um, I don't know why I didn't, but I didn't. So this year I wanted to include everybody, even those that transitioned. So we had, um, four people retire, so that caused for four openings. Two people that I announced went from part-time to full-time, so they weren't necessarily new hires. Uh, we had, uh, one individual that, um, Australia?
Oh, New Zealand.
New Zealand, that moved back home to New Zealand, so, um, to take care of her family. Um, and then we had, um, another one that moved, um, to Shrewsbury. Um, trying to think, um, I think that's all I can remember off the top of my head. So, but to answer your question about is that common or what have you, it's very common actually in today's society. It's not common to have teachers that stay a long period of time in a certain district. It's the same for administration. Um, it's just, I don't know, that's just kind of the new thing, you know? People don't like it, they leave. Um, or people feel they need to get closer to home, they leave. That was another one. We had somebody that had been traveling an hour and a half every day and in the winter it just wasn't working out, so he was able to find a place closer to home. I mean, when somebody tells you that they can get a place three miles or five miles from home, you know, that's, you know, you congratulate them on that. So we, we had a couple that were able, that did do quite significant travels, that are able to get closer to home. So, and, and some of them that had left have actually left me beautiful, uh, thank you cards for support and, and, um, administration here for support, um, but they just had to be closer to home. So it's not that they didn't like, that they didn't like it here either, it was a convenience factor, daycare purposes or what have you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next on my report is the annual audit of financial statements. That is given to you every year, it's just more or less as an FYI, um, um, in regards to, this is the Asbit Valley Collaborative. When I get things like this, I just send it forward to the school committees because you elect me each year to be the board for you, uh, be the board member. And so this is just for you and FYI, you can see that Asbit Valley Collaborative have had quite a nice, uh, audit completed. Um, next I have for you, every year we do my goals. I have sent you a draft version, not really to be, um, expect you to have read this at this point, but at the next meeting on the 16th, we will, um, I will need a vote on this because I need to give these to all the administration and the teachers because they'll be making their goals based on these goals. So, um, some of the administration today had given me some feedback as well, so I'm making those tweaks and recommendations, some of the things that I missed that we have on our strategic plan that they said you didn't put that. Um, there's a lot that I didn't put on here because you can't encompass everything, you guys would be there forever. Um, however, there's some things that are significant enough that I feel we need to add. I'll do that and send it out to you, but any feedback that you have, if you want to talk with me about this this week, that would be great, um, or email me, I'd appreciate any, anything you feel I might have missed. You'll see that the third goal is an individual goal, which is really working with the, improving the, the budget communication. We had some feedback on that on my Valves last year. So, um, we have received information from Berlin in regards to wanting to be part of the, um, task force, um, but Boylston, we have not heard back yet from them and I actually saw, Brad and I saw Jim Wood this morning, um, just said, have you decided, you know, who would be a part of that? They just, I think, had more questions in Boylston about what is the purpose of it? Why are we doing this? Why would we meet? I explained that a little bit to Jim, uh, this morning and I had explained it to, uh, Marty McNamara last week as well. So hopefully I clarified it and we'll get some representation from the Boylston side as well.
At the men's breakfast?
At the men's breakfast this morning, yes. Marty McNamara was, uh, spoke at the men's breakfast this morning, so, yeah. And, um, Carol and I will be presenting at the November men's breakfast, so, um, just so that you know. Yes, we'll be there in November. Um, anyway, I don't, you know, if you have questions, like I said, if you could just feel free and, because I would love to get your feedback and if there's things that you would like to see me do more of, that would be great. I also used the, um, chart that I had given you back in May in regards to the standard areas, the indicator and the element areas. So that's what I used when I developed this based on those as well. Um, administration recognition, I, I did acknowledge Diane and Ben, um, at the regional meeting, but I also want to recognize the entire administrative team, the work that they have done this summer in preparing and working with me. Um, you know, they all know I'm 24/7, you all know I'm 24/7, and when they're tiring me out with the work that we're, that we're putting ahead, it's just, it's amazing. I'm excited for this year and I'm really excited of the, um, administrative team that we have working. This is the first time in a long time that we've had the same administrative team working together, it's two years in a row. That's the first time in quite some time. So we're excited because we're already knowing each other and working together as a team and we can even joke and, and, uh, and everything else together, so it's been, it's been good. We can push each other's buttons and as far as we can go. Right paw, wait.
Right paw.
But, um, so it's been, it's just great. I, I can't even say enough about our administrative team, wonderful. Okay, Director of Financial Services report. Um, what we have right now is, um, Tom and Lori and I met on, on different occasions and we went through the candidates that were certified. We pulled, I had Cheryl pull out, out of all the applicants, those that stated that they were certified, we pulled them out. Um, we went through them and unanimously, uh, we chose five candidates. Um, Car, uh, Cheryl has called all of those candidates, three have responded, two have not responded. Um, three have responded and we have interviews scheduled for Thursday morning for those three individuals. We're hoping, um, if we can hear from the other two, that would be great. If they don't call back, that tells us that they're not interested. We've emailed and called, um, and so hopefully we can choose one out of those three. The goal is that if we can choose next week, I don't know, Lori and Tom, did you want to address about the following week, maybe having that person come or did you want to wait till the 16th? We had kind of talked about, I'm sorry, I put you both on the spot on that. We had talked about, we could have that person come next week just for the purpose of being interviewed by the full committee, or we could wait until the 16th, um, and have that person come on that night at the school committee meeting. I don't know what the committee would.
Cause you're not in next week.
I'm not in next week.
So we have evidence prompt to.
You would, you would be able to do this where the two of you could facilitate? That's up to the committee, what you would want to do.
I think it depends on the sense of urgency too. I recognize that it's fairly urgent thing, but would a week and requiring people to come to a special meeting?
Is it even possible for us, if anyone looks quickly at their agenda?
Do I just hold off to the 16th?
Yeah.
What's one more week?
Maybe that, cause, right, otherwise it's.
Okay.
Quite a few meetings last couple weeks.
I agree. Okay, so we'll just, we'll tell those candidates that, um, when we interview them on Thursday. And I've asked Cheryl Sharon to also be a part of the, uh, interviews with us, so it'll be me, Cheryl, Sharon, Lori and Tom.
So these are group interview, when you do them?
So they'll come in, one's at 8:30, one's at 9:30, one's at 10:30. So all of us will sit there with them and ask the questions.
That's what I mean, group, ours as a group to one candidate.
Yep.
I thought you meant all the candidates.
I thought you did too. I was like, wow, that's an interesting interview. Who's got a better answer?
That'd be kind of interesting.
Okay, so that's, that's it for my report, so Karen, do you want to?
Sure. Um, first of all, I just wanted to thank Kristy and, and all of CPAC. The board has done such an incredible job and I have to tell you, in the time I've been here, National Inclusive Schools has grown and grown and they really have so many of the kids participating, they've done a really phenomenal job with that, so thank you. Um, I wanted to give you a little bit of, an update on retail. Um, this was finally this summer, I know I've been talking about it for a few years, but finally we were able to get into the pre-training and our teachers were wonderful, they were well-practiced, we sent them constant emails about the date that they could go on and because of that, uh, we were able to get all six administrators registered. Um, two teachers in Berlin, which was our limit in Berlin, and an additional teacher is taking the SEI MTEL test to, um, get her endorsement. We were able to get three teachers in Boylston, which was an extra teacher, and in Tohoto, we were able to get nine teachers registered, which is two additional. So we weren't only promised seven at Tohoto and somehow we squeezed two more in, so we were pretty happy with those results. Um, there were more teachers trying to get in and they did shut us out eventually, um, so we'll have to get some of those teachers in for next year. Um, and all of the training, contrary to what we first heard when we were talking about retail, all of the training is happening after school hours, so it's not costing us money in substitutes, which is a real benefit to us. Um, and we have teachers going all over, Fitchburg, Northborough, Worcester, so they're spread out all over the place doing the training. So, um, hopefully it will all be done in a couple of years and we'll, we'll get more and more of them trained. Um, I was going to tell you a little bit about our summer program. We ran a summer program as we always do in Berlin, um, 35 students participated for our special needs students who without some summer programming will fall behind and, and become more significantly behind. Uh, so we do that just to keep them up to speed throughout the summer months and, um, it was a very successful program. It was run by Janelle Fitzpatrick again this year and, um, good participation, almost all of the students were there pretty much every day, so we did well with that. I was going to talk a little bit about preschool, but I saw Carol, so, um, she's got it on hers too, so I won't steal her thunder on that piece of it. Yeah, we've been working on training the preschool, um, in a new curriculum, so she'll tell you a little bit more about that. So that's it for my report.
Thank you, and then, um, Carol?
Sure. The biggest challenge in preparing this report was trying to condense it into some kind of summary of everything, of each component that's happening, uh, here. And as Karen said about the, the preschool, you know, we're, we're like exploding right now with things that are happening here, um, in teaching and learning and, oh my, it's just amazing from the last time I spoke to all of you at the end of the year, end of the school year, to all of this happened since then and more that I didn't even capture in this report. I think the first thing to talk about is curriculum in terms of data collection, data analysis, using that data to inform instruction in the classroom, because we, we talked a lot about that last year. There was a lot of planning that went into that. Um, and the, and the principals, the administrative team met twice, we had training this summer from Collaborative for Educational Services around principals talking in their buildings with teachers about, about what they're seeing in the classroom, how they're gathering that information using the assessment and then how they're moving forward and using it for their children. So we did a lot of work around professional learning communities, which is a model of collaboration, but also a very focused collaboration around, that's results oriented, that's data-driven, and it gets teachers looking at that information and moving forward together as a team. So the, the administrators did a lot of work around that piece. In fact, we were spending time today talking about that as well, moving forward as they meet with their staff, as their staff members in forming these, the PLCs, from preschool all the way up to 12th grade. So it's, it's just been amazing how much work has been done through the administrators with this piece. Core reading program, we've talked a lot about that through the literacy team recommended Grau Hills Reading Wonders. That has been introduced at the end of June. The teachers are in the process, the early stages of their implementation. There are like any kind, there's a learning curve to that for the teachers and we're bringing some support in the end of September during our PD day, but it really, it's walking through it together, I think in a way that we hadn't been able to before when teachers were isolated in their rooms trying to grab this type of program and what do we do with it? They're going to be able to sit each week and work in their grade level teams and talk about how do we go forward, what do we need to do next? How do we utilize all of the components in this program to make it the best possible program for our children? So that, that's happening. Professional development planning, as I said, is hap, is September 26th is the first of our PD day, uh, the first of our, all three schools, um, PD day. We have NIASC work that needs to be done in the middle and high schools that day, but we also again are bringing in trainers to work with all of the teachers on data-driven instruction because we know that not only did the administrators need work and, and training in that, we have to have the teachers understand the language of looking at data together. So we have, uh, trainers coming in to facilitate, facilitate those discussions as well. That's the first of our, our PD, joint PD days. We have another one coming up in January with all three schools and our focus will be technology. A lot of the workshops that are being planned are based on the PD committee recommendations that we had last year when we had shared that, um, that work with you. The next piece, kindergarten and preschool teachers were trained in June and this includes SLPs, speech-language pathologists and paraprofessionals who work in the early grades and, uh, physical therapists went as well. And two of our administrators, Karen Lynn and Paul Goodhein, to train in, um, reading assessment or teaching strategy gold. It's a formative developmental assessment that we will have for pre-K and kindergarten. This is really, um, looks at development, developmental focus on our earliest learners. And this was through, uh, through the Department of Early Childhood, EEC, I'm totally blanking, early education and care, through the Department of Education. And this will give us data on our youngest learners. What do they need so we can catch them early if we need to do intervention so that they, we're not seeing so many children in need of services as they get to the older grades? We have a picture of them. The two areas are, um, that we're focusing on for the Department of Ed this year are social and emotional and approaches to play and learning. If you've been following a lot of the work in early childhood today, the focus has really become the importance of play in the early grades and, um, so that it's, it's play with a focus on, on education here. So with that, we also purchased a new curriculum for the preschool teachers in all three schools. So it's the same program for all three teachers, so they'll be able to sit down and, and implement the same curriculum in a way that they hadn't done before. And that's huge for them to be able to even have these conversations. Along with that, Sally Grimes is coming back to do coaching work in Berlin and Boylston in the early grades. Sally, um, you may remember we, we were involved with Sally last year. She's a early childhood literacy expert. Um, she has spoken nationally and internationally and she's going to be working with the two schools in the classroom with the teachers and, and then sitting with the teachers and talking about what do they need in the classes to, to present a stronger literacy component to the students. So I don't know, did you want to speak to Sally at all?
Okay, you look like you were going to say something.
No, no, I was just thinking my conversation with Sally and your conversation with Sally today.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, she's, um, she's quite an inspiration, um, and to be a. No, she's, she's, she's quite an inspiration, and to be a, a part of, you know, who she is is just quite an opportunity.
We're very fortunate to have her for this time. Not only is Sally coming in to work with the teachers, but we're also having a literacy night in November sixth, and we're gonna start promoting that, oh, now, as a matter of fact, I'm starting tonight to promote that. Sally is coming in to do an early literacy night, talking to young, the parents of young children about the importance of literacy, of getting started early, and what parents can do at home with their children to do this, this kind of work. So please encourage anybody who knows, even families that may not be here in the school system, or children who are in private preschools or not in preschool, to come out, it's, the focus is pre-K through second grade. So we're going to be reaching out not only to our schools, but also to the private preschools in the area and kindergarten as well, and invite those, those families to come in and join us, because they're all our children, and they're all, they will come here eventually, so we want to make sure that they're prepared when they come in. So Sally has, has offered to do that for us as well. And we'll be having, we'll be having babysitting here, so that will be a nice incentive for parents to come. What else are we doing?
I was just gonna say, you know, to promote that event, I think there's a Dare Halloween party that the police have, and that's right before November sixth. Might be nice to talk to Chief Tony, and have some flyers available there, because there's usually a lot of kids around, pre-candy kids.
And that's good, any place we can.
Great way to get out in the community.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, any way that you can think of, we will send that message out. In the meantime, teachers in grades six through twelve have been entering their curriculum online in Atlas Rubicon this summer. That's been a huge piece for us in middle, high school. They've also been doing that, we had a team working in, in McGraw-Hill in Reading Wonders from K five this year, so they, they implemented the units as well and mapped the curriculum. So that was done in three days, it was pretty intense. In August, we spoke about STEM quite a bit at the end of last year, and I know parents were very, very interested in getting more around STEM, science, technology, engineering and math in the schools. This summer in August, representatives from all three schools went to WPI for a two-day institute, so this was at least one teacher representative and the administrator. And we set up a vision plan and goals for the STEM integration in the schools, and we'll be continuing that work through one of our committees this year, the STEM Committee. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. Nadine had put out in her letter at the beginning of the year about forming a STEM advisory board. We've also, we've already gotten several parents who are involved in that field, who are interested in serving on this advisory board, and our, our goal really is to connect our students in the high school with some of these, these, some of these corporations, and being able to get them into internships, shadowing, having folks come in to speak in the schools about what the opportunities are from, from elementary school all the way up for children as far as their career and college readiness. I can tell my voice is going, it's been a long day. We have eight committees set up for this coming year, they're Thursday meetings, you're more than welcome to come and join us and see what they're about. We have technology, literacy, data, professional development, our garden committee continues, and our new committees, STEM Committee, Global Studies, we'll be working on in the high school, and as I mentioned before, our Early Education and Care Committee, which we had already started last week. Finally, our grants, as you know, I had sent in our kindergarten grant, I want to be looking this year again, a transition grant, a possibility for full-day kindergarten in Boylston is coming up, and I do want to talk more about that, not tonight, but about thinking about moving forward with that grant. Title I and II grants, we're working on, keep tweaking those, and I have eleven additional grants, trying to focus on for September, I got down, four, four down this weekend, plugging away with those, and those are for the gardens, trying to get greenhouses for these beautiful gardens that we have outside to protect them, and also looking at some STEM grants and these others that have come along. I think that's probably everything. Until next month.
We're busy.
Busy.
We're busy.
Questions?
Did you get all of your volunteers for the, all your committees? I know the email you sent out, I think last week there were a few openings.
I, I did, over the weekend, folks were sending me in, yeah, their forms, I think they just didn't get to do that, and in some cases we got more than we needed, and folks were interested in those committees, so who did, yeah.
I think what was interesting is when I first started here, we started a committee, people were a little bit reluctant, didn't know really what was the purpose, what was the outcome gonna be, and I think that as they see the work that these committees are doing, is driving what we're actually presenting for initiatives for the following year or whatever, and I think we're getting a lot more people that are interested, because they're finally seeing that these committees are really your voice, and that's a way to voice how they wanna, how they wanna proceed, so we're seeing a lot of, a lot of interest. Great, Paul?
So it'll only be another hour. So you have, again, kind of a highlights list of what happened over the summer, and things that either did happen over the summer, or are planned for the near future. At Tohoto, the addition of Chromebooks, again, we, we saw a, a need when it came to online testing, map testing and park testing. There was a strain on the resources here in terms of keeping other academic classes going and having access to technology, so Chromebooks are gonna help alleviate that. An additional iPad card for the middle school, some additional wireless mics for this room, the commons and the auditorium, and some recording technology for the world languages classes. At Boylston and Berlin, first, they're very similar at, at the two elementary schools, first of all, we hired the technology teacher. We were able to get both new computer labs up and running for the first day of school, which was quite a challenge, but it was done. Purchased iPad cards for Berlin, using a BEF grant along with some of U-Fund, so that we could kinda boost that up a little bit. At both of the elementary schools, installed new firewalls, again, when we start talking about efficiencies between the district, we're looking to see if we can consolidate some of our databases, like right now, the libraries and the health software, each school kinda has their own separate database, and it makes it hard, like when we're transitioning from the elementaries to the high school, to do some of those things, and with the addition of the new firewalls at the elementary schools, we're hoping we're gonna be able to consolidate some of that, and hopefully it'll, it'll give us a little bit of savings in money, but also just make things easier as we transition from fifth grade to sixth grade here at Tohoto. At Boylston, we did additional prep work for the smart projector installs, which will be happening later, some of the stuff is on the backwater, and so they're a very popular projector right now, and so it's very difficult to get stuff done. We were able to get three additional projectors installed at Berlin, or at the end of August. District-wide, we were able to hire a new tech, network technician, Dave, we met today, again, super guy, and I, I think we're gonna learn to love him. Certainly I'm glad, again, basically started Monday, the twenty-fifth, and again, we were able to get both computer labs up and running by Wednesday morning, so again, it took some twelve-hour days, but it got done. We're converting our district webpage from School Fusion to Edline, a lot of that has been done, teachers have had some initial training, and have created some initial webpage stuff, and as well as, some of them are transitioning their old webpage stuff to the new webpage, we'll be changing that over early next week, week the eighth. Converting district email from MechNet to Google Apps for education, that will be completed this week. Again, we continue to support Atlas Rubicon where we can. The leadership team participated in a webinar in early August, again, around park, and obviously we've made that decision to move forward, but this was, again, kind of a reiteration of what will be needed, what steps we need to take in the fall and throughout. So again, it was, it was good to have the whole leadership team on board for that training, that webinar, so I think that gave them a, maybe a little bit greater appreciation of all the, the technical aspects that are involved, and we'll help support that. We've continued to make preparations for all our other local assessments, AMES Web and First day of school, we were able to distribute letters for all pre-K through twelve students, so they would have access to Power School. We're gonna have a pilot group of students, teachers, sorry, this year that are using the gradebook, and we'll also be kinda looking at what pieces of Power School we might be able to, in the future, roll out for parents, again, for greater information. We were able to coordinate the demographics update, so that instead of our emergency cards, we're doing that all electronically now, so instead of having the, the little cards to fill out, parents will be able to update information online as it changes. Coordinating iPad, working with Crest Technologies, as we've gone from, say, having about a hundred iPads to now probably closer to three hundred and fifty iPads, we wanna be able to have greater control. When we had small singleton numbers when we first started, it was really more in the special education area, but as we bought this building on, and now as we've expanded to carts at the elementary school, iPads typically, you know, Apple supports them two, three, four years, and after that, they kinda go, and so there is kind of a quick turnaround cycle. And those apps that go along with it, you know, have an associated cost that some of the, we do a lot of free stuff, we probably have eighty percent free apps that are on those, but the twenty percent of the apps that we do pay for, we weren't able to manage those in previous, because we were doing singletons or singleton carts. Crest Technologies is gonna allow us the training that Dave and I are gonna get to manage those, and so if we have to, if a device breaks, if a device goes offline, if a device basically reaches the end of its life, useful life, we're not gonna lose those apps, we'll be able to pull them back and put them on the new device and show up savings in, in our budget. And finally, I did mention, we also installed a new firewall at the central, again, this way they're all kind of in the same, what's that word I'm looking for? Same level of functionality, so across the district, we will be able to do a lot more remote, and so if we need to have access to stuff at Central, either from this building or at the other elementaries, someone's not gonna have to jump in their car to get access, or as well as, you know, as we have seen with, we often need access to some of our files for this central office, that's gonna make it easier for us to do that in a secure environment.
I just have a question, I think it's great that Power School gets the parents involved, because I think that that really helps learning. Will you be able to tell how many of the parents actually log on and use their password?
Yes, so they're, each year, it's something that actually gets reset each year as part of the rollover, but the student access logins is tracked, and so we can tell how many, for each student, how many logins have, have been recorded in a given year. And we can do snapshots, you know, throughout.
And just like out of curiosity, have half the parents, you know, jumped in and looked in?
Um...
I, I don't know.
Because we're doing...
It's early, so I'm saying now, but I'm saying like six...
One of the reasons why we chose to do the demographics is almost like a force to get most of the parents to do things, so it was a way of bringing everybody online almost right away, it's like, here you go, and oh, by the way, this is how you're gonna do your emergency information and update your, your demographics, and so it was kinda like that immediate hook. Again, it's kind of too early for me to tell.
Yeah, it's definitely too early, but I just was wondering if it was possible.
I will say that when we pushed forward with doing this emergency card online, it was our effort of trying to go green and not have any more, I mean, you get, as a parent, I remember, you'd get like a stack of papers. So if we can do things like this, where it's a one-click, and the more things we can add to that site, but it was a first attempt, as I was passing it out to teachers, I actually went into Boylston and explained to each teacher as I hand-delivered them, and I, I did that because Paul was out last week, otherwise the principals all did it. And the excitement on the teachers' faces even, they were like, oh, great, we don't have to worry about the emergency cards, it's just gonna happen, and, and then the secretary can see when somebody went in and whether it's been done or not, so the secretaries will be following up with the families to say, we need you to update, we need this information to be changed, so...
We created a flag in, on the form itself, in which we can run reports, so we'll be able to know who actually went in and updated, so beyond looking at that log, actually, we can run a report and basically see who hasn't, who hasn't updated the information.
I was very excited, actually, because I hated those stupid little cards, it felt antiquated to be spending time doing that. But I did notice this year, and I think it's a step in the right direction, but it also is not very green, and it's a little frustrating, to go in to do sign-offs on the policy manual or handbook or whatever it is, you have to go in, but you can't do it online, you have to go in and download it and print it and send it in.
So that's one thing, I mean, we do that for, and there's no reason why we can't do that for parents, we do that for actually some of our staff training, as well as the sign-off for the staff handbook that we're doing, there's no reason on the webpage that we couldn't do that.
Yeah, that would be great. That's good feedback, Lori.
So it's, there are, it's basically like making a survey, and one of the questions basically says, you know, check this box, and I have read it and understand it, and, you know, it's kinda like an electronic signature, and we could have it fill names. The one difficulty, I will say, that we have had is sometimes people don't fill out the form completely, so they check it off, and they might put their first name or last name, or maybe they don't, you know, we've had, people have trouble with figuring out which building they, they are from, and that's as adults, so I don't know, as, as parents might set up or whatever, so there, there's, there would still probably be some work at the secretary end to kind of weed through all that, but there's no reason why we couldn't create something like that on the new webpage.
That would be great, we could try to do that. Okay, thank you, Paul. As you can see, there's a lot that's been happening with technology, the technology plan that we put in place has been...
Next summer maybe I can have somebody working for me.
You're right, I know.
Can I move forward with the handbook?
Yeah, next is the handbook, and we have the, this is in relationship to policy CHCA. For the first time in, I don't know how long, we actually developed a comprehensive staff handbook. This is just a first read for tonight, and again, any suggestions or questions you have before the sixteenth would be well received. I think they heard me with a little frustration over the last three or four weeks as I was trying to develop this, because we have three separate teachers' contracts, so when you're putting, it's not just policy, but it's about their emergency days or their bereavement days, so I had to put each contract in there separately. So this is a little bit more written, and what probably most would be, there's no reason why, but one thing I thought was important to do for the staff handbook was, obviously I started off with a greeting, but we also put in here a directory of who, who to be in touch with, and so we have so many new staffs, who their executive board is for each year, as well as the school, community and superintendent relationships according to policy, so most of it is policy, and they're policies that get asked about frequently. So now the staff would just have one place to go, you're supposed to have a staff handbook, but what's happened is every school building was different, and some principals had followed up with a handbook, some had like five sheets and said, well, that's kinda like our handbook. And I didn't really know what they needed, so this probably took about a month, went together, but off and on in between, and then giving it to the administration and saying, did I miss anything? did I miss anything, or do you see anything, and revamping it. But I also put all the staff meeting dates in here, so everybody knows. Everybody's building staff meeting, the PTO meetings, the school calendars, CPAC meetings, when the quarter ends and starts for everybody, so they, they have all that information in there. So this is what we're asking staff to do, is every year they go on and they check off what Paul was saying. They go online, they have to read their, they do their ethics training, and they have to sign off. The same thing will be required in the staff handbook. They have to go on and read, and then they check off that they bring the staff handbook.
So we're trying to prove this for a first read?
This is just for a first read. And then next time, we'll do it as a vote. We don't have to vote for approval of the first read, it's just a first read. That's it.
Good. I think that's all we have on the agenda.
It is, so now it's just a couple of things I'd like to just, if I may. Christine, four future items for the tri-meeting, my final goals, as well as I would like to introduce to the school committee what ALICE training is.
A-L-I-C-E?
A-L-I-C-E, all in caps. We're all trained on that this summer, and I want to explain it to you because we'll be doing a parents event as well as a staff training on that. Also, I need to know the select board, if we're going to, since we're moving forward and the next step is to go to the select board of each town, you would need the school committee member to present this to your select board. It wouldn't be coming from me, it would be coming from you as the committee. So I think you'd have to have, you need to discuss who would be the one to present that.
It would probably be the individual school committees that would go to the selectmen, correct?
You would actually be going as a representative of the region committee because this is actually an expansion of the regional amendment. That's the way I would see it. I'm sorry?
You'd sort of be wearing both hats, right?
You'd be representing both, but not just Boylston, all Berlin, but.
I would say for Berlin, it would be nice if all three of us might.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that, something all three of us.
And so you'll have a, what, post a meeting then?
I guess we would need to, I, I, what are your thoughts? I don't, I'm not the only one.
I would prefer it that way, but.
Yeah, whatever thinks best. How did we do it last time when you went to talk about that inter-municipal?
It was just the two of us?
It was just me and Larry, sometimes it was just me when I went to speak to selectmen, sometimes it was Larry, me and Nadine. So we didn't have to post or anything like that, I just asked to be on the agenda.
I'm just trying to think of the way that it would be most effective. I don't think having the whole committee should, that would be a good idea.
What did you say?
I don't think all six of us could walk into this office. Either one of us, I don't think it would either. That was what I was trying to say.
Just wondering, maybe if it's a committee to committee meeting or committee to selectmen, isn't making too big a thing out of it, where you're just trying to get them bought into the next step here.
Right, it's just the next step of developing a, you know, you'd be wanting to develop the subcommittee and doing an analysis.
Right, and you want them to have a representative on it.
Right.
I would think if each of the chairs-
Yeah.
And if the regional chair wanted to go to both, that's probably fine, but I would think if the local chairs weren't, he would be a representative, you don't have to post a meeting. I would think that would make sense.
This does look a good idea. When did the Berlin Selectmen meet?
Monday nights. Boylston is Monday nights, is that right?
Yeah.
I don't know if often.
It's every other Monday, I think, for Boylston.
So we just have to see when those meetings are, but do you want Cheryl to send the request to be on their meeting agendas? Cheryl knows all their dates.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and then I'll go to both.
I would like, should, can, can we, is it appropriate for us to work together just to put a quick little outline of exactly what we want to cover?
As, as the three chairs, sure. At the Boylston meeting, you just have to be aware that there will be two people here representing different boards, and so with their, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be any windy deliberation. It's more like informational and answering questions on behalf of the committee representative. So you just have to be aware that you don't want to be crossing that line, which isn't, isn't hard to do, just be aware that there shouldn't be any, anything-
Deliberation.
That would constitute a meeting between you and-
Yeah, makes sense.
What they've done in the past, sometimes, Laurie, is when there's two, whether it's to Berlin or to Boylston, just for the sake of argument, is to just post. Because then it just covers you, and ever there's a question about a violation of an open meeting law, it just covers you, even though you're there representing, you do stand on both parties. Doesn't hurt to post, Cheryl can very easily post. It's just a covering.
Yeah.
Is that what you think too, Ken?
I agree. I think that's a good point.
Okay, so I'll talk to Cheryl about it too. And then just one other piece I just wanted to reiterate is I've been doing my blogs, and all the administration has been doing blogs, so please feel free to go on the websites and check everyone's blogs. But when I sent out my blog, and as Carol said, we got some parents emailing with interest. It was amazing how quickly parents wanted to be involved with the STEM Committee as well as the Global Education Committee. Those two committees just spiked so much informa, you know, interest. It was really great to see. And then as I was at Boylston Elementary School last week, there were parents that some have children here at Tohoto, as well as at the elementary school, and they were coming right up to me and saying, I saw your post, and I really want to be a part of it, and, you know, really excited to see those, so it's just good to see that happening in those blogs. People are actually reading them, which is great to see happening, so. That's, that's it, I'm happy with the new year and the new start, and it's all good.
Any other future data items, anyone? Here we go.
So we need a motion. Did you have anything, Angela?
I was just looking at this amend, regional amendment subcommittee thing. You know, there's different, trying to get all these different pieces on. We're just gonna start with the selectmen, trying to get the selectmen on board because it's also some of the incoming, who-
Yeah, but right now, first, first and foremost, in order to even go for a CIC grant, we need to have the select board vote. So I think once you have the select board vote to approve to move forward, at that point, I think then we threw a letter to invite people from those committees, but you need that vote first.
I forgot about that, that's right, okay.
Yep. Okay, so we need each school committee to make a motion to adjourn. So could I have a motion to adjourn the Boylston School Committee?
Salute, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the Berlin School Committee to adjourn?
Salute.
That was a favor.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the region with-
Salute, second.
All of them give it a aye.